Try and only do it.
I have to speak. Maybe we could stretch the carriage.
Let's kick about.
You're gonna make the owl crazy.
Yeah.
Try that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ah, go relax there.
Except that it's low.
That's what you can give.
Okay, you ready?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
All right, welcome everyone to our Whitefish Community Development Board meeting for the growth policy. It's June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and begin. We have an agenda for tonight that has a couple of items on it. Um, but first we'll start with general public comments. And we may have some people coming in from online also. So if anybody has a general public comment for something that's not on the agenda tonight, so water quality or hazards, go ahead and speak now. I'm guessing you two guys are here with specific items in mind.
Yes.
All right, anybody online, general comment?
Think so. Anybody online wants to comment, raise your hand?
We have a full board here tonight, and is Mallory with us?
Yep, she's on, yeah.
All right. Sounds good, so we'll go ahead and start with our water quality goals and objectives. And we'll first turn to Alan to give us a presentation on this.
There you go, Madam Chair, members of the board, Alan T. from Black, Long Range Planner with Whitefish. In the church, I mean, oh, it was, did it go away? Let's see, yes, so I thought. Oh, it was right again, it was sharing. What happened?
Okay.
Um, all right, let me try, it was probably sharing again. The. It's working, I don't know why it's not, I mean. See. In the second.
There you go.
You get it now? Okay, so real quick, I don't, I want to refresh on this, I gave this, these couple of slides at the last, um, city council work session, because there's just been so much discussion about water growth policy in our community plan. So it's a policy document. What it really is, is the visions, the values, and the official positions of the city. These are the policies and the priorities that drive future regulations, work programs, status funding. So some of the questions, it'll say, who are we? What do we want to be? What do we value? How do we grow? What should our goals and strategies be? I say that because this isn't a scientific or a financial study. It's not a hazard mitigation plan. But each, i- i- in general, what happens is that each section has a narrative. It could be a paragraph, or it could be several pages, depends on the community plan. Uh, existing conditions, and then there'll be goals and objectives to address that narrative. Many cities, um, will just have one paragraph on that topic. But we decided moving forward that, that any goal and objective that we had, we were going to have some narrative to try to justify that, so that you could understand why that goal and objective came about. So that's why hers is more detailed. Here's an example, a goal, maintain improved water quality of the Whitefish areas, lakes, rivers, groundwater, and streams. Now, the typical objective, and this is the one I actually took directly, no land maintenance, land disturbance, private public shop cost, soil erosion, chemical conca- contamination, so I'm not going to read the whole thing verbatim, but that is an objective. And then there could be an action that comes out of that, maybe saying, um, update the city's, uh, stormwater regulations to X, Y, Z. So the, the narrative supports this goal and the objective. Reason why I said it is because it's not necessary to, to have a write-up on any potential contaminant that could possibly be in the water. If it's meeting the goal and the objective, because I've gotten comments about all the different types of PCBs, some of them are trace contaminants, is it really necessary to put that in the growth policy? It's, it's all, again, just about goals and objectives. So going to the water quality section. So this is part of the environmental resources and hazards elements, just one section. When we first started on this, we met with the Whitefish Lake Institute in May two thousand and twenty-four. So a while before we even started, we met with Mike and talked about this. How about having a meeting with him? He gave us all the different things that he thought that this should address. And based upon that, we incorporated all those issues and we did that write-up. So staff worked on this for several months and went around to all the planners. They all made their corrections, then it went around to all the different departments in the city. So Craig, Public Works was one of the different departments, Finance, Police, Fire. They all made their comments, and then we incorporated those comments into a revision, and then we sent that revision out to different agencies that were all experts. And I listened here what all those different agencies are. And then all those different agencies made their comments, and we incorporated all their comments, or listed where we didn't. And then we sent that off to public review. And that went out to everybody, five hundred and fifty people on the Whitefish site, for approximately ten days, I think. And then any comments that we got, one, one in particular that, that was really one we didn't think about that was, was excellent, was talking about fireworks. So we didn't really think about effects of fireworks on water quality. So it's a very good, perfect examples, I got that comment, I got that comment. We did some research, we looked at what the resolution was, some of the discussion of city council, and we incorporated that into the new draft. And once all of that was done, those different versions, that final draft came to you. So we first presented the environment section to the board in December nineteenth, and it was discussed very briefly, but that was the time when, when it was decided there just wasn't enough time to talk about these sections. So it was continued until March. And then in March, we received two different versions of rewrites, mostly goals and objectives on the water quality section from one of the board members. We've received three more versions, so we have roughly five versions. Some, somewhat similar, some differences. But we have concerns with the comments. And the reason why is we believe that many of these suggested adjustments are duplicative, unenforceable, require resources the city does not have, or they're not, or they're within the purview of other different agencies. Although no action was taken on these comments at the March work session, uh, the board moved to put this back on the agenda today at the, the, the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five work session. So the most recent comments that we have comprise nine pages, and those were all included with the staff packet. And these are the general topics, reorganization of the water quality section, required for the city to, to perform scientific studies with specific requirements regarding what needs to be included in periodic reports. Required for establishment of a water quality information center. Requirement to track zero-three D compliance, that's something under the EPA Water, uh, Water Quality, or Clean Water Act. Requirements regarding failing septic systems, including updating public records, regulations to inspect septic systems with sale of property, criminalization of septic systems greater than forty years old. Uh, some pretty specific requirements for golf courses, and a requirement to move fireworks off of Whitefish Lake. Due to the study's changes from what was initially prepared and reviewed, our, our significant concerns are because it was suggested that WLI was consulted in the writing of these goals, we forwarded these to WLI and talked about them. WLI stated that they hadn't met with this, they had had consultation, but they had discouraged most of these goals, and that they had actually supported the, and the draft that staff had worked on with them. Following this correspondence, we made some additional, uh, revisions, uh, to incorporate as many of those proposed recommendations as we could. And we made some additional recommendations from WLI, which were really just specifically to some, some crediting, uh, WLI and some of the actions that were taken. We forward those to WLI, who, uh, said that they were supportive of the most recent version of staff. If you look at the first version, it was in your packet, we redmarked what we suggest would be those. One of them talks about, it's kind of a general idea to be a little more clear to partner with Whitefish Lake Institute, or that's a modern water quality. Um, there's a general goal about identifying and mitigating septic leaky contamination. Um, there was a comment about, there was a original recommendation to do septic systems with sales of properties, but we are not involved with property sales. But we do have, we are involved with annexations. So if somebody that's on septic wants to annex into the city, we can require a septic system to be inspected prior to that. So we did add that. Um, there was a comment about agency service systems and incentives, and there was a, they had a period of thirty years, but it's actually twenty years. That's what matches a special improvement district. And then there was some general language, uh, about, um, when there's recreational fields, because there was a discussion about whether we want to just pick on golf courses, or whether we want to also talk about soccer, soccer fields and all those other, that use the same kind of fertilizers as golf course. So we made it more general for recreational fields in the city, but leads to another enemy, you can read that if you want. But so with that, I'll stop, you, we've given you what we recommend, and then after this discussion, we can move on to the next one. So that's it on water quality.
All right, thank you, Alan. So now we'll go on to public comment. If anybody has specific comments on the water quality section, please let us know.
I do, and I don't know exactly where it's going to fit, but, um, and maybe what you just brought up, Alan, it's going to cover it. But, um, I have yet to see anything. I know that Water Quality, DEQ, um, has water quality information from the discharge from BNSF. And, uh, that data is, I'm assuming, available to see whether that they are in attainment or not, uh, on their discharge permits. And that's been going on, I think, since twenty fifteen. Um, and I, the reason I bring it up is because I saw them testing water today. Uh, that private contractor testing the, the wells. Uh, but no one has ever tested the outfalls, um, and just to take a grab sample, and I think that might be regulatory. But, uh, anyway, I, I'd like to see some thing in there to discuss water quality and the DEQ reports. Uh, and it might be something so general as to say, in the goals and objectives, is to monitor the annual report from DEQ, they, uh, the discharges at, uh, at the Texas Falls from the ground.
Uh, great, remember, the Black Plays, like, at least, this, uh, to me, so.
So they, they just, they have two discharges, one, obviously, they're discharging to groundwater, you know, a drop of water that hits the ground that doesn't get captured, even though their stormwater management system goes to groundwater. Um, the city of Whitefish is not a regulatory agency for groundwater. Um, I think we could put some language in there that will, will monitor it, but I don't. I mean, again, it's, it's outside of the scope of the city of Whitefish does. Um, they do also have a stormwater.
It's not in our city limits here, is it? Very sure they're in, they're not even in Whitefish, they're incorporated.
Like discharge, so they have a stormwater pond that collects any water that goes into an inlet or, um, their storm sewer collection system. That they do have to sample before discharging to Whitefish River, they have a permit for that.
But, but what I'm talking about is, I see pipes, six-inch pipes, come from the road system in the, uh, in the rail yard. And when, and if we get the heavy rain that we're expecting this weekend, those pipes are going to be pumping some pretty ugly-looking water, uh, directly into the river. And, uh, that concerns me. And, and the fact that, yes, Burlington Northern right away is really in the county, uh, but the river runs through it. And if you look at the hundreds of kids that are now jumping off the bridge, uh, at this time of year, uh, they're affected by that water. And, and I think we have a responsibility, and I, I'd like to see it addressed.
But I don't have the question, we did monitor, we found that they were out of compliance, I mean, Craig, what would our? We, we don't have any regulatory arm for that. You would have to contact DEQ for that. Whitefish River is a, is a water body of the state of Wisconsin, not with, this is Montana.
Jesus.
Go ahead.
I want to say, honestly, that in years.
Wow.
Jesus.
Totally been a decade, um.
Bye. My tears.
It's a constant with anyone, like, while they.
And so, I mean, sure, we could look at the report, and we could tell DEQ that they're out of compliance, but DEQ would be the one that would have to enforce that.
Doesn't it have to be that when you get the permit?
Or when they get the report, right?
Every year, yeah.
You would think so. It's going to be working, that's overlapping with DEQ doing.
So if I understand.
Send you to Wisconsin.
So if I understand you correctly, Richard, what you're saying is that this discharge is not currently monitored?
Well, it's not reported.
It's not reported. That we're aware of.
That we're aware of. I think if, if somebody searched DEQ, um, BNSF rail yard, which I tried to do, uh, and it is a radical that you'll never escape from.
So my concern is if we're not tracking it somehow, how would we ever know to let DEQ know that there was a compliance issue so that they could continue their, whatever their process is? Not without us trying to enforce it, but just to make sure that DEQ knows.
Yeah, I, I just think it deserves some recognition in our growth policy and growth plan.
Well, could we?
There, see that?
Could we, uh, you know, put it in the policy or some recommendation that we hire a water quality company? There's one in Calisbello anyway. And, uh, just have them go out, check it once a year, twice a year. And if they come up with a report that says this is outside of specifications or outside of limits, it could be, we hand that report over to DEQ?
Well, so BNSF is already required to do that. I don't think the city has the, the authority to hire a private company to do BNSF and sample their wells. Um, I just, I, I just, I feel like the suggestion is, I, I, I mean, so the city reviews all sorts of permits, right? Or the number of activation permits, it would be like, DEQ should review the city building permits in case they're out of compliance with something that DEQ are regulating. I, I don't know, I guess I don't have an issue having language in the growth policy about the fact that BNSF has just a regulated stormwater permit, but to have the city monitor that on an annual basis just seems like a, like a disgrace.
And so I think there's an important point to be made here. Um, the DEQ, the feds, the county, they have primary responsibilities in several areas here. The city has a secondary responsibility, certain to be, certainly to be, uh, informed, and maybe try to push these other agencies to act. The city does have the power, under the law, that if Whitefish Lake receives pollution, for example, the city has definite standing to bring a water quality trespass case. Or a case under the Hail decision, the recent climate decision, which basically says that the, uh, Constitution, Article Two, Section Three, right to clean and healthful environment, uh, is self-executing, meaning you can bring an action on that. So if there's damage to water quality, I think the White, City of Whitefish would have standing with regard to the Whitefish River or the lake. So that's a discretionary matter. Uh, it's up to the city whether it wants to do that, but it does have the, the power to do it. And, uh, so I think it's important to, to monitor, to track things. Uh, in my comments, I'm not suggesting that the city spend a lot of money on doing tests itself, but to track what others are doing and bring it into one place and make it public so that people know, so that the city knows, and so that the city could maybe push the DA, DEQ, or, uh, perhaps with less, uh, probability of success, push the county to do something. Uh, so that's there.
So now we're possibly out of general public comments, and more going to turn to board discussion. Does anybody else from the public have a comment on this specific thing? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start.
Was I clear on my concern?
You were clear, and now we have to find a way, from my perspective, to incorporate what you're requesting and what the board has prepared in some comments that have already been submitted, to incorporate this into something that fits in a growth policy that will drive going forward a policy of knowledge, from my perspective. Not necessarily saying that we will monitor or we will take immediate action, but just somewhere in that step, we need to be informed. If testing's being done and it does affect water in the city of Whitefish, some way together that information in case something further needs to happen. So from my perspective, that's kind of where we need to discuss these suggested comments, suggested alterations to the staff, um, report, and come up with something that works going forward in a growth policy, just for the goals and objectives at this point.
I think there's a reason nothing green grows.
I would guess, yeah, probably, you know, I'm sure that there's some things being sprayed, and, you know, they want to keep weeds down and whatever, but also there may be more to that, so it would be nice as, and, and it may be something that public can know without the city intervening. There may be a way, but that, yeah, so.
Do, I mean, can. It seems to me that, again, we're talking about goals and objectives here, something to the effect of, uh, one of our goals, energy, uh, set up systems or insurance systems in place so that the testing that needs to be done out of the rail yard or any other place is in fact being done, or something to that effect.
Results.
Be consistent with a goal that we could act on as we're able to. Um, and it's not specific saying, okay, you got to hire three people, and you got to do this, and you got to do that. The goal is, uh, ensure there are systems in place that are monitoring outflows into the river and the lake. We'll figure that out. We figure that out at some point, but we can. The nice thing about this growth policy is that it's not like our prior growth policy to some degree. Once this thing is put in place, we're going to have to draft and make those systems happen in fairly short order to begin to implement those principles and objectives. So this is not something that's going to sit on a plate, but I think in terms of the, the, uh, what I, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, what we could do is say, one of our goals and objective is ensure that there are systems in place that are monitoring, um, outflows into the river, and, um, ensure that those are being done. And that, and whatever those systems look like, I don't know. Uh, but I think that's something for a policy, but that seems to be a solution, or I offer that is, is what I've heard.
As a, as a goal line like that, and then with an objective, I think we could be a little more specific as far as communication with BNSF or, you know, timing of that, and then from there into an action plan during implementation.
If you were going to, I'll say this more an objective, we already got a really relatively overarching goal about reducing contaminants and all this. This is more, this kind of specificity is a thing.
That's, yeah.
Oh, it's like a, I don't.
Okay.
And then, you know, uh, discourage or whatever, monitor, is the city of White, well, whatever I had here. Um, that's so, I'm sorry, this is so, so much.
Let's find this.
Maintain improved water quality of Whitefish areas, lakes, rivers, groundwater, that's a goal.
Okay.
And then this would be an objective, but again, on this.
Under that goal?
Then this, this would be, this would be an objective under that goal.
Okay.
Again, I, I gotta defer to Craig, because this is falling on his lap.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, this, Craig can answer you, like, answer you would know maybe what the legal stuff is. This is falling on Craig's lap. He's going to be the one that's going to have to do this, or his department, that's why I'm saying I assigned this. Um, I don't know what that looks like, so that's.
Sure.
Okay. It's easily under the right objective, I just.
Do we not want to do that?
I, I feel like we do. Um, I think the specific comment about BNSF, city doesn't have an arm to ensure.
No, I, no.
Got a feeling.
Right, and I, no.
I rely on deputy agencies.
Right, but I, oh. What I'm hearing is, and I think we probably do some of this anyway, it, but I think a goal could be ensure that there are systems in place that are monitoring, and you're telling me that we do that. That's, and so I think we could, but I think having that as an objective, that is okay. Okay, go ahead.
Well, the only, the only comment I have is, um, we're very close to being in MS four. And, I mean, aren't we having that, when we do that, are we going to have to map, and then we'll be in the city. But when we move, and, and there's some discussion about MS four, the public, the city council, which we haven't seen yet, but you will. Part of that is going to be requiring to determine the mouth outfalls, anyone, so doesn't that require when you get to the MS four?
Yeah, those are city outfalls, those are.
Oh, yeah, those are coming from split city streets.
But some of those outfalls, the one on Edgewood, is a combination of the rail yard and Texas, uh, Wisconsin, and everything else. I mean, that's a huge outfall, uh, that is a combined, uh, well, it's a, it's a, it's a swell that runs along Edgewood. I don't know how much runoff that takes from the rail yard. Along, right, whatever, I watch it.
And, uh, what we're talking about is monitoring, right? Richard, me?
Well, I, I think the public, you monitor and inform the public. That, I think those are the two things that I would like to see, uh, as part of the growth policy, growth plan, under, um, improving, uh, maintain and improve water quality of the Whitefish areas, lakes, rivers, that reverse White's called, the Fish River, uh, groundwater constraints.
What are we monitoring specifically then? Because I, I'm just trying to come up with the language. Insurance systems are based to monitor what?
Outfalls?
There, you have two things, you have surface water and you have groundwater. Those are two different things, am I correct? Yeah, so like, like in a big rainstorm, that's the surface water that sheets off of there.
But where, are we only talking about BNSF? That's a huge, that's a huge monitoring study, as I'm saying, I'm starting to get poor Craig out there monitoring. I'm just trying to make this work. If we're going to put this on a growth, I, I have no objection to any of this, I just, if, if we put it in there, I have, we have to figure out a way to do it. And to make it right, that's my concern. I have no vested interest, other than if I put it in there, we have to figure out how, how to do it. I don't want to make a promise, I don't want to make a promise that we can't do.
Is BNSF mandatory, mandatory reporting this to DEQ?
Yeah.
So is that something that's available to the public?
Yeah, I don't think we just go on the website and find it, but it's.
It's public record, so do we want to compile something in a city website that allows the public to see DEQ reporting that affects Whitefish Lake and River? Is that possible? Is that an achievable thing?
So that's the water quality website that was recommended in Sir Heberlin's white marks. And again, that's up to Craig. Um, if, if Public Works or another department is formed, right? I mean, it would, either it would be Craig or some other department that would have to design and monitor a, and, and, and to be perfectly honest, not being a genius, I don't know any city government that does that, do you, Craig?
Is it?
Well, certainly.
Can't tell.
They said that, I know city governments will put up the water quality of their drinking water. That's very common, you can go on and look at the water, but I don't know the city websites. I don't look at a link, I don't know the city website for water quality of the municipal city. But.
Well, I hope.
Where? Few, few cities have Whitefish Lake inside the, the boundary, and, uh, Whitefish Lake is very, very important to the people. And, uh, yeah, I suggested a, a city water quality website. And that's without knowing how difficult would it be to set it up, and how difficult would it be to maintain it? Uh, but it, it's there as a general idea, and it can be refined. But, yeah, I think the city should dig into the files at DEQ and get everything that BN has, uh, reported there. Uh, there'll be asbestos cases, we've got the DEQ files on the, and the Fed's files on the railroad cleanup of asbestos. It was very difficult to get it all. So, uh, the public should know about this, they should have a place to look for it. But I don't know how big an ask that is, uh, to set up a website and, and try to list all this stuff.
I guess I just chime in, um, I can, Alan, make a really good point. If they put it in our growth policy, we need to do it, because the first thing that will arise during a lawsuit issue about the fall, you're broke. We put it in our growth policy, we need to do it, because the first thing that will arise during a lawsuit issue about the fall, your growth policy, I think we need to balance that. The things that we say we're gonna do in the growth policy with demands on staff and how much time we actually have to do that. I think that would be a huge undertaking, I'm really, while we're talking higher, I can imagine Craig's department has the time to go through.
Well, I mean, we partnered with Whitefish Lake Institute, it has a website that. It feels like that's the appropriate place, let's put the. The, you know, responsibility and the professionals that we hired were.
I know Mike Corporal specifically said he recommended against us having a water quality website.
If WLI is already doing it and doing all of it, that's fine. And uh I think we need to uh. Build in as much discretion in the city with regard to these objectives as possible. Because we don't wanna run into what Angie has pointed out, that it may be very expensive to set up something like this, but. We just, we need to make it an an objective, but give the city some discretion on how to implement.
I I think that. In the uh in the city, the website, a simple link to the WLI water quality thing.
Something like improve visibility or access to DEQ. Water, because that could be one link, something very broad, like improve or. Give access to, does that make sense, Alan, instead of creating a whole new website?
We're kind of, I, what I'm hearing is we're kind of mixing apples and oranges. You're talking about specific things to meet goals or to meet objectives. Creating a website with it, that's not what this is about, what we're trying to do is come up with a goal. And our goal is we're gonna improve, maintain water quality of all lakes and streams, okay, got that? An objective or might be, in these circumstances, I think, um ensure. Take steps to. To clear.
What about Whitefish, we'll contract with Whitefish Lake Institute to do the monitoring.
No, that's that's a detail, again, what's our goal here, and then what's our objective? Our objective is to improve monitoring of outfalls, uh. Water into lakes and streams.
And reporting to the public if that.
I don't need to know that that's proof of the monitoring or just to make the data readily available.
Yeah, or ensure. I think what I wanna do is ensure that it's being done. That's all we, that's all we, I mean, I've got, my concern is that, given our history around here. DEQ is not on top of things as they need to be, we've had to, we as a city have had to make them do their job. In terms of monitoring and cleaning things up, because they just like sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, we've done that a couple of times. That isn't our responsibility to do it, but at the same time. It's our water quality that we care about, so all we, all we're saying is, um. Ensure that the testing, the district. I. I think what we want is. A. Some confidence that DEQ is doing their job.
It's almost like monitoring their monitoring.
Yeah, monitoring, monitoring, I don't have, and I don't know whether that's fair or not, whether that's realistic, but. That's what we're really talking about here, I think, is just what we can, set up systems. That are gonna check or monitor um outfalls into into Whitefish Lake, into Whitefish River within the city.
So now that we've come from not wanting to pigeonhole ourselves and be in legal trouble if we don't achieve. Then we need to look at what Alan had written. What has been suggested and find some medium between those that achieves what we've just talked about without. Opening legal doors. To challenges.
I mean, I don't just really wanna stay coordinated with other agencies, cuz we're running coordinating.
We wanna allow transparency.
Yeah.
So people can see and say either they're not monitoring or it's not.
Without us having to actually report the results.
Mm-hmm. Just give access to, make access readily available. Which I don't even know if readily available can use the right language.
I don't even know if we can do that, it's just really hard to, like, formally to say that, we're gonna. Check and make sure they're remaining, but we're not going to report their data or analyze their data, or need that, because one of the experts on that. So, I mean, I think maybe if we go back to Alan's objective.
Which was what?
I can put like the red mark print, but uh it specifically talks about this.
Can we do that and find find that portion?
Which red mark prints doesn't specifically talk about this, but sure, um.
Um, the objective that just says zero sedimentation and zero nutrient loading. The long objective that you read earlier.
So there's, I mean, here's the staff's version. Trying to incorporate as much as we could, totally suggested, and talking to WLI. This is what they suggest, this is what they supported. The red, what what, the additional stuff that we red marked in is what WLI said is appropriate. And so we're recommending.
Continue to partner with WLI.
And monitor water quality, identifying and and address certain contamination, I mean, that gives us something, but.
It's okay.
I mean, again, I've no horse in the race, I'm just, I know, I, I get it, I, I, I put it in here, we gotta do it. And and Craig's supposed to retire.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Loon Lake is within city limits, who's monitoring that, is that part of WLI? Who, Loon Lake?
Yes.
Cuz that's adjacent to the Gulf Coast, with the South End. I don't know.
Who, WLI?
I thought they'd only monitor the lake, but.
They they, yes. The answer is, Loon Lake is part of the lake shore, um.
Protection regulations.
Protection regulations, and what I, I know that the Gulf Coast for years has done testing over there. They monitor on an annual basis, cuz. I've actually gone out there and done weird, you know, measured the lake and all that kind of stuff for them, so I know they do something, I don't know who's doing it.
With the uh water, the amount of water decrease in Whitefish Lake at twenty percent, is that similar to what Loon Lake may have?
We're we're down two feet this year.
On both. Loon and Whitefish Lake.
I don't know about Whitefish Lake, I can tell you what Loon Lake. That's walking around there last month, so, hey, let's move on, what is, what is?
So I mean, that identified mitigating, or that, continue to partner with WLI to address and monitor water quality and identify and address source of contamination, I mean, that. Broad thing covers.
That sort of covers it, yeah, it seems to me.
Cuz, you know, and how we actually do that, I think, and we could certainly. You know, try to make sure that EQ and EPA are doing their job, but I don't know what power we'd have to make them do their jobs, you know?
I think that's where I'm concerned about the word insurers, that it's, we just, we don't have a regulatory. Govern that, but I mean, it's as simple as working with the, I mean, BNSF has an entire environmental staff. And they have.
Right.
Reports that they have to submit on a monthly and annual basis. We can collect those, I'm just not sure if it's appropriate to put a link on our website to them.
To BNSFs?
Yeah.
Well, it's already more like public record, so, too many problems.
So perhaps something on the end of that, like, and grant public access as available. Or and provide public information as available. Cuz the goal is for the public and for the city, if we're not going to create a specific area. We already work with Whitefish Lake Institute, right, and basically what we're hearing is that no one is seeing BNSF reporting. It's going straight to DEQ. And unless somebody acts as a member of the public and digs or requests that information, no one knows, is that? Right?
Yep.
So I think that objective under this goal is to have someone, whether that's WLI. Helping grant public access, this says monitor and what, so. Yeah, provide public access to water quality.
Go side of the book.
I think by what I say, public, provide public access.
Water quality information if when possible, and when available.
Yeah.
Water quality.
Identify the sources of air and provide public access. To such information.
Where where feasible.
Feasible or available.
Where.
You could talk to Mike to see if that he could link that on that yellow I can say, cuz that seems like that'd be more appropriate.
It may be something he has.
If they put up, every year, I don't know how often they do it.
Yeah. Okay, does that seem to address that issue?
Does that? Okay, so we'll still keep that on table to see if there's something that needs to be added. All right. Um, board discussion on this. Broadly, or do we wanna get into specifically, the reason that we're going to go specifically through. Anything that's been suggested is because at the last city council, they said we should have gone line by line. So we'll go, it can be quick, it can be as slow as. Needs to be to kind of talk this through and figure out where we're headed, somewhere between suggested edits. Public comment, staff report to get to something that everyone's happy with, does that make sense to everyone? More line by line instead of a blanket hole, do we like this section or that section? Go through and as anyone has suggestions, we can go through those. Okay, so if a board member has a suggestion on a specific part, now is your time to. Bring that up, we'll discuss it and then continue to move forward from there.
Yeah, I guess it's a a time that I could bring up my comments and um. They they cover a lot of things that we just discussed, this is good, you can see what I did with it. Okay, I'm gonna hand out a copy of the red line to everybody. And it's got a lot of, right, I've I've been changing it lately and over the past few weeks. I've got that. One round, I don't, I only have a, do you? Toby? Okay, I've I've got one, so there, here's one extra.
If you want one, that's for Mallory.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and Mallory is online, um Mallory, chime in, raise your hand anytime you would like to. Add a comment, um and we'll read things thoroughly enough, hopefully, that you can keep up and know where we are as we go through this. So just stop us as necessary or if you have a comment.
Okay, so anybody online should have, um what is called, so. In the water quality section, you go to agenda, hit here for the documents, then water quality. Um Alan posted four documents, this one is called proposed water quality changes and WLI correspondence, so that's the same thing that. Everybody at the table is is looking at. So um beginning with the general goal, we have Alan's uh maintain and improve goal. I called that a general goal, and then his objective is listed also. And then this uh statement, continue to partner with Whitefish Lake Institute Institute to address. Monitor water quality and identify the sources of contamination, okay, so.
And we've just added to that. Correct.
We added to that and public access were feasible?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So then I broke it out, instead of having just one general goal, I broke it out into sediments, nutrients and storm drainage. So I have separate sections for those three goals. The first goal is about sediments, although I included other harmful pollutants into Whitefish Lake. So the first objective is to, uh I'll read it, the city of Whitefish shall obtain. In- information on land development activities for the purpose of meeting the above goals. Um, okay, so I I wonder, are we gonna, do you wanna vote on each line as we discuss it? It's the concept of breaking it into three sections, nutrients, sedimentation and storm drainage. Is something I did, we could vote on that, or do you wanna wait till later, how do you wanna proceed?
I think it's good to look at if we're if we're going to break it down, because if if we say no, we don't want to break it down, then that kind of. Shortens this or makes it a little bit different. So.
Some of these could be done at the end, I guess, okay, let me know if we should vote on something. So the first one is land development, uh to track land development activities for the purpose of meeting these other goals. And I added track the effects of construction on water quality. So the concern here is sediments that would come downhill sides into Whitefish Lake. And uh this would be an objective to, uh the uh staff says that they already collect this information. But here we would place it in a a center, the water quality data center, whatever, so that. Um, the amount of land disturbance on the hillsides can be compared to the uh water quality goal.
So I have a question, John, before we move on, is the majority of this contingent on having a specific water quality? Website and water quality reporting apparatus, does that make sense?
I refer to water quality center, that could be a website, it would, uh. What I imagine is a a center, one of the planning staff would be responsible for water quality. And that person would gather all the information from outside sources, so that would be the place to look.
Okay, so my, I guess my first question with that is, does that, if we don't create that. Is that an issue, and then what do we have that would already be? That type of function without that thing, does that make sense, is that Craig, is that? Who would be our water quality?
That would be WLI.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's why WLI said we shouldn't do that, they're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, uh later in the document, I say, any function, any objective here that can be formed by. Performed by or is already being performed performed by WLI can stay with WLI, but we would have a person and. A lot of documents gathered and an awareness in the city of what WLI is doing and how much. Land disturbance there is on the hillsides and so forth.
So how much of that is WLI already knowledgeable, if you've, if you have any idea? Is that something that they're already gathering?
I don't think they have land disturbance maps or anything like that.
Okay, so this is basically to track. New construction, land movement that's creating sediment as a separate thing from nutrients.
Right.
Okay.
Was this on project by project basis?
Yeah, the information comes from building permits.
So we're putting a GIS together. We're suggesting that we're, I think, we're we're mapping all this on GIS, that's what you're suggesting.
While keeping the data, I don't know if it, I don't know how hard it is to map it, and that's what it would be, that would be here. We went up a GIS project, what are we monitoring with the disturbance?
Amount of sediment.
The city has very strict. Emotion control, construction site emotion control ordinances that would require. Included in every site, or permit isn't approved. Um, building inspectors are on site regularly monitoring that, public works employees are on site monitoring. Um, you know, what's happening in the public right away, but I think to assume that. Every building permit is tracked and monitored and reported on a website is. Way too far reaching for, you know, your current staff for the. I mean, we're we're basically, I think, would be adding a water quality. I mean, we're we're basically, I think, would be adding a water quality on the site staff.
Let me ask you this. Currently, everybody, um how will we measure the impact on water quality? That construction going for forward, Jen?
When you if you ask Mike Kupel, you talk about non-point pollution, right? Which is there's multiple sources that come in that are very difficult to identify. Cause you, you have to check it at the lake or at the end of an outfall. But there's no way to know for sure, you know, where those different points are coming into it specifically.
This is about our MS four?
Well. It's a different thing, but. You know, when they Whitefish Lake Institute went out and monitored the lake, they found different areas where they had contaminants, but the, you know, unless there's. Specifically something that they could find, um like Lion Mountain was a pretty obvious one, but there's other ones that are non-point where, yeah, we're finding these things in the lake. But we don't really know where they're coming from. When it comes to sentiment, you know, there's definitely times, you know, like when uh. Tom Thomas's property had the big washout, and a bunch of sediment came one down into Whitefish Lake. There's been a couple of other ones of those around the lake, I mean, those things are fairly obvious. On most building projects. You know, there might be a rainstorm, you know, obviously requires straw waddles, require different erosion control stuff. Every once in a while, you know, somebody kicks over a bale or something like a little bit of water gets through. But um most of the time, if it's a major one, you know, we're on top of that and we're able to see that. But you know, there are times where, you know, a big rain event, or even the best of that stuff's gonna fail a little bit, because just the water's gonna go everywhere, right? So how do you pin that on one property owner, or how do you make sure that, I mean, just the monitoring? Uh for sediment, like citywide and all the building permits. On that kind of a scale is a very, very, very difficult thing to do, but you know, we have policy. Place to try to protect that and make sure that people put up the proper stuff to make sure that. When it does have a storm event, that, you know, the minimal amount of, you know, sediment contamination come through, I don't know how we could.
Maybe we should uh limit this tracking to uh sites with slopes over ten percent. That would eliminate a lot of them. Cause obviously, we don't wanna monitor every daily permit, no.
But I. I hear what you're saying, John, I guess my. My rhetorical question with this is, these are more implementations. Strategies and very detailed and specific as to what, how we're going to accomplish. These goals or or objective. I think it is, and we need to have that discussion at some point. But that's when the discussion about how we accomplish these things, these goals, we have that. When we start talking about implementing it and creating the regulations and whether or not, I mean, this is, you know. I would, again, what I'm reading here is. We need a. We need to separate the document of the goals with what we're gonna do, because we haven't decided. How we're going to, as a policy matter, how we're gonna implement that goal or that object, or whatever the objective is. And it may require us to say, through argument and discussion, the only way we can do this and we wanna do it. We're gonna, we're gonna authorize the staff number, or we're gonna authorize, you know, a new, whatever it is, but that's. That's in the action phase, not in, at least in my view. Not something we need in the growth policy to get to that discussion. Because I think this could be part and parcel of, okay. We think this is the goal, and we think that some of the things we need to consider are these, we can put those off to the side as legislative. Recommendations for when we talk about implementing it, what we thought those possibilities would be, but again. That's the way I organize it in my mind. And again, given the parameters of what. The growth policy is. We need to consider all of those things, but maybe not at this phase. Those, all those implementations of what we wanna accomplish here are really about. What regulations we put in place to support that. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's not. Yeah.
And this point, I I'd like to read from the uh Montana Growth Policy Handbook.
Right.
It says, too often, at page two, uh too often, growth policies and other planning documents, documents provide. Large amounts of data and analysis, but contain little clear or concrete guidance about how to improve city or town. Uh because of this, growth policies and other plans can often result in few visible improvements. This can be due to the fact that the growth policy was either not realistic, or its guidance language was so vague. That the community leaders and residents were unsure what was supposed to be done. Then uh they define objectives. As the objectives are the strategies or steps that would be used to achieve the goals in the growth policy. Unlike goals, objectives should be more specific, as says, much more specific and measurable. So how specific do we get? That's, that's a good question.
That's the question, yeah.
So I'm trying, I don't wanna be too specific, specific, but this is just five pages in a hundred. A document, it's gonna be hundreds of pages, so I think five pages on water quality might be appropriate. And so it's a bit specific and we can shave this and shave that as we wish.
Yeah, from my perspective, because of the, I'll call it, for lack of a better term, debacle with the. Economic Development Chapter that we went through. With seeing the goals and objectives multiple times at multiple meetings. And then requesting after a draft was put out, requesting from, you know, stakeholders to. Give their comments and then coming back. I think it makes sense to do more input and more work on the goals and objectives. So that by the time the draft is coming out, it can encompass that. I don't think it means that everything specifically we're talking about right now has to stay in the goals and objectives, but I do think it's a good time. To raise these things, so that by the time the actual draft comes out. It can reflect what we've talked about with goals and objectives. I think we can narrow them as we go, but keep these details in mind or keep them somewhere. Does that make sense, Alan, in your writing world? Or how can we then?
Because again, um we looked at the recommendations and talked to WLI about what we could realistically put in there. So, I mean, we could cycle back, but we've already gone through all these, they've said, they've said either we can't do this, we don't have the resources, it's not what we do. We don't do websites, we don't do scientific monitoring. Mike agreed with this, so I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm, we're we're trying to figure this out and we put what we could in there. I need, but but you know, if if we're, so asking me to redo it or to rework it, we did, and we talked to the experts. So, you know, beyond this, I guess you can add things that aren't recommended by WLI or us. That that's where you can go, but what we have is what is recommended by us, WLI and thirteen different agencies. So we wanna add more, you can't, I'm not, not in my purview. Here, I think we're talking about the margins between science and policy. So this planning board is doing growth policy, so we talk about policies. And uh my impression from speaking to Mike was that he prefers to be the advisory scientist. And not to be uh telling the city what to do about policy, that's, these are a bunch of choices that I made. Uh these are not Mike Kupels, uh um it's, well, this is not on Whitefish Lake Institute. Put it that way, uh so. What is science and what is policy? I don't think we have, are demanding much science in here, I'm trying to avoid that. The city would have no monitoring in the sense of making tests, just monitoring in the sense of. Tracking information that others uh obtained, so. That's where I'm trying to go on the line, right?
I guess the question is, has someone obtained a sediment load or sediment? Gathering from construction, so requiring that. Do we want to go so far with the growth policy? Because this is for twenty forty-five, right? So we're looking far ahead and preserving and protecting water. Which I looked back through some of the first visioning sessions where, you know, we had really. Really broad questions to ask, what, you know, what is, what is unique about Whitefish Joy? And some of the most often commented things were the lake, the rivers, natural resources and clean water. Um some of the things that people, one thing people said they wanted more of was environmental regulations. So if this is to be a document to reflect those visioning sessions and then also. What we as a board have heard, I think we may be more specific than staff or WLI want to be. And if that's the direction the board wants to go, that's why we'll vote, then that's the direction that we'll go, knowing that. Writing the draft, Alan, now you'll have more information on which direction to go. Instead of really vague goals and objectives. And then being hit with a draft that says things that you've never seen before. So in my mind, it makes more sense to have these conversations now with goals and objectives than waiting for. Alan to write a draft and then rewriting a draft. So I'm open to hearing all of this, and I'm also open to saying that's not feasible. Will be legally challenged immediately if we say that. So, but I guess I'm not understanding completely the timeline of when this is implemented. If we say we would like to have someone monitoring sediment levels. At what point, you know, can a group come in and say, you're not monitoring well enough? And how do we protect ourselves from that? How do we ensure that we? Are maintaining and improving water quality? But not opening ourselves to lawsuits and fealty? Cause I I would like to do the maximum to protect in this growth policy.
I guess like, and just for mine, but I go back to what Alan always said at the beginning of these. Sessions, which the growth policy is a regulatory document. And when we enact zoning regulations, when we act, add to other regulations. We go to the growth policy for guidance. So if one of our goals, just extremely general goal, right, is to protect water quality. Um if we're implementing a regulation, we'll go back to the growth policy, how does this regulation satisfy the growth policy? So, I mean, I totally understand wanting to protect the environment as much as possible, and I commend this group for, you know, the thought you've given. To this, but it is again, a regulatory document that we will come back to when we um enact. Other regulations that are more specific to what we're trying to accomplish and protecting the environment, so I guess that's the guidance I would give.
I I wouldn't suggest maybe slightly different take on. And growth policies aren't very good for that. But what they do do is provide the legal nexus between policy goals. Provide a legal basis for many of these regulations.
Well, I know, but the Montana Supreme Court is, but they're regulatory documents. Understanding that that's what they do, so I mean, you have to comply with them, but I think. In in light of the growth policy, you're looking at the broader picture. And again, if you guys want to, I'm like, Alan, I don't have a horse in this race, if you guys want to get too specific. My question is, if you don't do that, it's going to come back on you. And some way she perform, exactly as she said with me, what if somebody comes in and says, okay, you say, you say you're gonna monitor sediment. You're not doing any good in that job, or you're just not doing it.
But I want us to know by the same, you know, other side of the coin. That once this is done and we're, cause to my understanding, that then we're just out of the picture, off to go splash in the lake and build homes and create sediment. So I want to know that somebody is looking at what's happening with BNSF, looking at what's happening with construction. And it doesn't have to be in this policy, something, you know. Completely specific, but I want it to be specific enough to have some teeth, to hold, hold this.
You know, I wanna get away from the, you know, there is this idea that this is it, right, and after this, we're done, but that's not true. This, this is what drives all of our regulations, our work programs, our policies, so, you know, water quality regulations. You know, so so you know, the idea that once the growth policy is done, we lose all control isn't true.
No, not you, us.
Well, you too, because because regulations, zoning, water quality, all come to you, don't they, before they go to the council?
Anything in the zoning code, it's not necessarily stuff in the public works. But I mean.
It was my understanding that we would kind of, once this is complete, what is the role of our board?
There, I mean, regulate, like when we did the landscape code, when I worked on the landscape code three years ago. The landscape code came to the planning commission first, and you worked on, there were several work sessions where you made comments on the landscape code. Which is how we implemented one part of it, and then eventually went to the council, so. The regulations, the work programs, those things, well, not work programs, but the regulations will come in front of you. So this is only, this is only the big picture, driving what the more specific things are in the future.
What about things like that come now before the Board of Adjustment? Would that continue?
Absolutely.
Variances.
So, variances.
Yeah, they're the other thing that's coming for you guys, but.
Yeah, you guys kind of are in the board adjustment right now, so don't think that this is the end of the process, for better or worse.
The difference with EMBI is that they, is that after this and the regulations are done, when the regulations are done, regulations have to. Allow by right processing, right, so the zoning, instead of. Having condition, it really comes down to having conditional uses. The idea of conditional uses goes away, and things have to be by right, stop me if I'm wrong, can't you? Um but all the regulatory things, nothing changes. The difference with EMBI is conditional use go away, basically, right?
And possibly P U Vs as well.
Possibly P, that's the difference. Right, but everything else is still the same, building permits, regulations, that all is the same. It's just the conditional use, public hearing for specific uses is what goes away.
So that's why when the zoning regulations come to you guys after the growth policies, then you'll really have the opportunity. Or the responsibility, depending on your, how you look at it, to craft those in a way that. Will give the city what they want when a project comes in, because right now, of course, we're looking at a CUP, a PUD. Um individually, but I mean, that will be something that you guys will have the opportunity to do, is to craft those zoning regulations in a way. You know, to protect, well, the environment, tech, people's personal and property rights, so that's, that you're not at the end yet.
Thanks for that clarification.
Another thing to think about is, I mean, you know, the growth policy is a big document, there'll be multiple chapters. That have goals and policies and implementation items, and there'll be a long list of implementation items, and it's a twenty-year plan, so I mean. Obviously, they'll be prioritized and the ones that need to get done first, but some things may not get implemented for many, many years, I mean, even our existing growth policies, there's things that. You know, are just getting implemented or haven't been, because they are a low priority and a lot of other things going on. Um obviously, there's a, you know, a bunch of stuff under the priority things that get implemented, so whenever there's a goals and policy and implementation thing, I mean, it's. Just depends on the budget, you know, the city council will have to do things, you know, whether or not we have staff to do them. Um you know, there's a lot of factors that go on in implementation, um things get implemented.
That is why I've been trying to stave off this idea of, after this happens, we're gonna lose control of where development happens, for instance, but that's all factors only. Right, we're, you're, you and the council are gonna decide where land uses are distributed and what types, that's comes after this. This is as a general goal, saying development should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And then when we craft the zoning regulations, we're working on trying to figure out how to do that, and that's sort of.
It's just easy to get sidetracked in detail things, but we're really trying to stay hundred-foot view, big picture. You know, looking at, you know, we all agree on the goal, we wanna protect the water quality, and we get. You know, argue about the details of what we can or can't do as a city, I mean, this is our city growth policy is what, you know. City staff can do and what the council can do, and what's within our legal right and ability to do under law, different laws, federal laws, state laws. And so we, you know, we have to figure out what, what's our responsibility, what other agencies can do. What other outside things like Whitefish Lake Institute, how we can partner them, you know, maybe we can look at ways to, you know, encourage additional funding. For Whitefish Lake Institute to continue to monitor things, I mean, those are the types of things that are achievable. Um trying to monitor the amount of sediment that comes off of every construction site in the city, that is not achievable. Thing that we can do, and anyone could do, any city can do.
Well, yeah, I think I could solve the monitoring or tracking of land development problem. First of all, limited to uh sites over one percent and chain on the shell to make, so the city of Whitefish may obtain. Information on land set, development activities on sites over ten percent, so as long as it's a make. The city has full discretion, no loss of its. So as long as it's a may, the city has full discretion, no loss of his possible. So I think that takes care of.
And then I.
And also I'm dubious of any connection between sediment of, sediment caused on a hillside above Whitefish Lake up on Big Mountain, say, and connecting that to the sediment that actually goes into the lake. That seems difficult to connect up. It would be difficult to prove in court. So I'm dubious about this, but I think it's important to make some kind of tracking of land disturbance on the hillsides.
Again, from a, to a practical map, you understand that 95% of the hillsides that drop in through the Whitefish Lake are not within the city of Whitefish. I can't do anything about that. The city can't do that. And we, we don't even have, that's not even an option. Even if we want it, it's not an option. Um, and we cut, and so in terms of our growth policy with respect to the city of Whitefish, I would probably agree with you if, given that we don't have hillsides that directly brought into the city of White, into the lake per se. We don't.
After the annexation, you might, right?
Annexation of what?
Big mountain.
I think that's pretty, pretty distant in terms of where sediment could come off of the mountain.
That's the problem. So maybe we should just strike this section, you know? Falls to be causing problems.
Yeah.
And I'm here to be practical.
No, no, I am. I, I get, and I get the concern. I guess my, again, we're talking about implementation of a goal, which is to identify and mitigate stetecliche and other contaminants into the Whitefish Lake. And not for Whitefish.
When you say strike this section, you're saying strike the whole water quality section? Cause if that's the case.
No, no, just the proposal.
With the reading, A.
Well, after looking over this, both John's and what we got, I think that what we have here, there's 16 objectives written out there. They pretty much cover all relevant circumstances. And to me, beyond that is getting into weed detail. And once you start getting into details, in certain cases, you're going to find one, they're going to miss another one over here, miss one there. And I think that this, uh, John's document here is going to turn a, uh, what is a two-page document of objectives into a seven, eight or 10-page document of objectives. That are going to be so focused that it's going to be difficult.
Again, and I don't, what, what is the, uh, I don't have. What's, what John's presented here is food for future actions in my view. How do we codify this so that our accompany this with, okay, in conjunction with these goals. These are things we ought, the, the group thought we ought to consider as ways to possibly implement or something to that effect so that at least we don't lose this without having to incorporate it directly into the growth policy. Does that make sense?
Um, it makes sense. I mean, again, I guess that would come down to implementation, right?
Right. No, no, but what I'm suggesting is zoom with me if you will. That we agree that, okay, these goals and objectives, as you outlined here, yours is perfect. What we want or what I'm hearing is because a lot of this stuff I think is implementing stuff that is theoretically part of these goals, but it's their implementation. So they're for further actions in terms of creating zoning regulations to implement these things. It seems to me we ought to have these things somehow raised available when we begin to consider action items to implement these goals and objectives. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, other detailed stuff, I mean, you know, if you look through the Alan's comments, specifically item by item on, on John's comments. You know, we outlined the things that we could implement into here as a goal objective and things out of our purview. But you know, some of the more detailed things, I mean, I think that's one of the things that we'll have to come up with as we, you know, complete these chapters are what are the implementation items? That's something the board's going to work on and like how, are there specific things that we can? You know, we'll.
Okay, so that's separate discussion.
Yeah, that's not.
It's a separate action thing that, that when, when this is done, I hope.
Yeah.
Right? Um, then we'll come back. We'll be coming to you with chart for implementation, who, who, short-term, medium-term, long-term? Who are the entities that are responsible for this and what goals this is relating to?
Yeah.
That will be yes. So, so this is, this is our big picture. And then there'll be a chart probably with implementation that you're all saying this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
I, much more detailed, but and it's just, until we get nailed down to those objectives, we can't even begin to put that together. We're not going to spend our time on that.
And I guess I, I heard what you were saying, John, with that, with the growth policy or, um, prior, and I had this discussion with Scott today. It's like, okay, I understand where they were coming from, saying it was those things were way too general to be, figure out where they're going. I don't think we can argue that these are way too general and that nobody understands what we're talking about. And certainly if we had company that with the action items or the implementation suggestions that we will get an opportunity to, uh, tabulate. I think that's probably a better way for us to ensure I, I'm not. I given growth, growth policies, I've looked, the other growth policy I've looked at, this is better. Uh, this is way better, more specific. It's more, uh, clear what we're talking about, what we want to get done. It's not more, I'm not reading it that way. But, and certainly once we get an opportunity to create a separate set of action items or suggested action items to implement this, I think that's where this all comes back in. Um, in terms of ensuring that it goes forward, that we don't lose it or there's no, uh, no question about what the legislative history is.
As I've been writing this and you know, you can find, you can look at the community plans for other communities and see like kind of pointless goals. Continue to work with blah, 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 right? As I've been writing this, because I've been on both sides, I've been long range and current planning. So notice like implementing. As I've been writing this, I've been trying to stay away from those kinds of statements and, and make them specific enough that, that it's saying that we're going to do something. We just haven't specified what that is yet. But I've been trying very hard to not do those way overly general statements and saying this is what we want to do. And, and when I can, I give little laundry lists. Here are some examples of what we're doing.
Yeah.
For exactly that reason.
Yeah.
Now I, so we're looking ahead 20 years and this is a living document. Water, of water quality. We don't know what's going to happen five years from now. For example, last year, the Gulf force consumed 35 million gallons of water from the lake. And the year before it was 10% more. Was the fertilizer consistent between the two years? And what about the fallout? Which measure did that? Has it increased, decreased? These are variables that we're going to consider all, you know, five, 10 years down the road. We don't know. So we have backup plans just for that reason. And also remember when we say 20-year plan, it's 20-year plan, but we're required to review it every five years. And right now, the way that I wrote it, because it's going to the other plan, it says three years. So by the, by, you know, by the time we've got this and the implementation done and all that.
Yeah.
We're back here. I just, I just got like a.
And this is kind of a stutter.
Part of that. We're doing this again.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, this is kind of a.
That's why I said it's a living document. It's going to be changing because of, of the environment.
So it's not one and done. And that, that term doesn't work here.
So after this discussion, sorry, I want to say this quickly and then I'll, um, I don't want to say that none of what you've done should be incorporated into the objections. Um, okay, objectives, because I think there may be some things that are specific that should be incorporated. So I would like to quickly go through. And that way we know that's pushed to an action item later. Everybody agrees, or that's something we all care deeply about and want it as an objective specify. Like we just added a little bit to a, to a phrase that Alan had. Now it's more comprehensive. Now it has more teeth and we can move on. So I don't, I don't think just because some of these are specific, that we should discount and say, wait, because somewhere between goals and objectives and drafts and action items, we're going to have to have these discussions. And I would just rather do it now with it in front of us on goals and objectives. Then later, after we miss it, or we go a completely different direction because we haven't talked about it. So do you guys want to take a vote on whether we go through this more specifically, or can everyone just say yes or no? Are you guys happy to keep going through?
I guess I'll offer this predicate. At least we have to take one, um, one, I think the way to move forward is take the current staff recommended objectives, lists that we've got here and all that go all the way through. Are there things from John's regra, the reorganization that we can fit in here that makes sense?
That makes sense. Yeah.
If there are great, if there aren't, are these, we've decided. But we have to figure out, rather than reorganizing the objectives, I think we're, we got to start with one draft to the other. I think the one that makes the start is let's deal with this, the Alan's draft or current draft.
And incorporate.
And incorporate anything that's from here that can fit or add another goal if we want to. But I think that's, that'll be a way to get us to move forward. So, you know, if sedimentation is an issue, okay, where do we talk about sedimentation here or something else? Or do we add where sedimentation that we're going to monitor that? I, I mean, that's kind of the way I think we could move forward. But we have to start, I think we got to start with the current draft and add to it as opposed to a, a, a complete rewrite. Um, and try to figure out, okay, do we want to do it this way or do we want to do it that way?
Okay.
That's not an interval.
Right. Now, I, I think we, and for that matter, we, if we decided we wanted to start with this, you know, the space that, uh, that John put together, that would be fair. But then we got to figure out how to get everything that's in the current draft or see what makes sure it's addressed. So I, my preference is at least the way I've operated with documents from city, from here to city council is we started with this one. What needs to be changed in city draft? That gets a, whatever we missed, theoretically, unless it's there, that can we put in? I think that's a better way to work through it. Okay. Are we okay with A? Yes. Okay. Are we okay with B? Well, I'd like to add, yeah, that's the way I do, that would be my approach to it. And I think that's the way we could work through it. We can't go section by section if we're not talking about the same section.
Okay. So we have the staff version and we're all pretty familiar with that. And at some point, it seems like we need to go through my list of things that be.
Sure.
Where do you want, where do you want? This is structured as adding to the staff version, although I did divide it into sediments, nutrients and storm trading. Right? So there are three, uh, categories under which we see objectives. But ultimately I think we need to discuss each of these and see what we come out with.
Right.
Okay.
And it may take some time.
Oh.
All right.
Yeah. So you start with the first thing and then we'll refer back to the staff draft and then also to your proposed and come together.
Yeah. These are just additions to the staff draft.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So uh, B, the city of Whitefish may perform scientific studies and data gathering as authorized by city council. That's a may, may never happen, uh, may never be funded. So I don't, of course, that's very confusing. The next one's important threats. So sites and activities identified as threats to Whitefish Lake or Whitefish River shall be monitored. And if violations are detected, important action, I change it to may take place. So, uh, monitored, it's monitored implies taking samples and so let's say tracked.
Okay. Sorry. I'm a little bit.
We're at three Ds.
So if we are, we're looking at your three D.
Yes.
And that.
Would, I'll do.
That would correspond to what on the staff draft?
Well, the staff draft, so you, you'll notice that the next three pages are all red. So there are things I added. And then the staff draft has seven things at the end or eight things at the end. So the whole middle was added.
So the staff draft originally had one goal and sixteen.
I said P.
So no, the, the, are you referring to the one that's like all marked up with my comments all over it?
Yeah, your comments in the draft.
One goal and about the policies.
Yeah. So the, the reason why is because the, the first objective says no land maintenance or land disturbance shall cause soil erosion, chemical contaminants, sedimentation, nutrient landing, stormwater discharge. So that takes care of nutrients, receptive sedimentation, and then all the rest of these goals. We're just breaking it into different sections. It's not a deal killer, but that's not the way all the rest of the formatting of this plan has worked. We've already addressing all those things and then we're listing general objectives of how we do that. So we don't quite understand why we're breaking it up because much of what we have was duplicative. It's harder to do. We're, we're, we're also don't want to make this overly complicated. It's harder to do, right? I mean, I guess you can break it up, but it's again, doesn't, doesn't format anything else in the growth policy. And then you want to go back, I guess, and start reforming anything else.
I don't think at all it means that we need to reformat everything else. I think it means, do we want to think of the water quality section as three separate ways to protect water quality? Or do we want to think of it as one goal of water quality and objectives under that? I can see both sides for writing especially, I can see wanting one goal and objectives to obtain that. Cause you want one goal for water quality and that's to have good water quality, right?
I, I think that every, sorry to interrupt you, Matt, here.
No, that.
I think every, I mean, again, everything we wrote captures what we believe we can. The stuff that we didn't add here, we believe either we should do it or we can't do it, like, like monitoring material through compliance. That's a federal issue. Something, not something we can do. How do we, how?
But you could monitor.
Well, we, we have the providing public access, but a, a perfect example is I, identifying threats to Whitefish and by those, you're detecting enforcement actions shall take place. Uh, we don't have a jurisdiction over the lake. How are we going to do that? What, how are we going to enforce it? We can enforce our building permits if somebody is not, not complying with their building permits and they have their, they're not doing their water quality. We already enforce that. But if we've got a two-stroke engine and the lake is dropping gas in there, how do we enforce that?
Well, I'm not, I, I think we're not talking about enforcement anymore, right? What we're talking about is, um, identifying, I, my, my whole concern here goes down to one thing. Is, you know, we, if we have some kind of a baseline for the water quality of Whitefish Lake that against which we can measure, the impacts of, you know, call it growth, not by point source or anything else, but cumulatively. Uh, if we can monitor the changes in the lake that are a result from, you know, activity. And there's, doesn't seem to be anything in here that requires us to do that.
Whitefish Institute does that on a annual basis.
But.
They publish. Okay. And there's a recommendation we're able to continue to work with.
Do we contract with them for that?
True.
That's why I'm saying much of this is duplicative. It's either we're already doing it or we can't do. That's why I'm saying much of this is duplicative, it's either we're already doing it or we can't do.
Right. What I'm, I guess I'm kind of stuck on is that, again. Your objective A. Seems to castleize. What? Our goal said, our policy is, which is, it shall be. Policy by should that no land maintenance or land disturbance, public or private. Shall cause solar erosion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's our policy.
I have to Google castleize, I have no idea what that wording is.
That's just way too vague. There is no connection between that statement and, uh. Septic leachate going into the lake, in the mind of a, of a citizen who's trying to figure out this. You, you can't draw any kind of conclusion from the general, uh, goal. There has to have to be objectives showing how we get there. As. Yeah, we did have an objective, so nutrient is basically what mostly, well, not always, but we, we actually added a specific. Objective about identifying mitigated septic leachate contamination. Right, that's a new goal that we added from your draft.
Yeah? And I have a section on that which we haven't gotten to, but, uh.
And much of that section is out of our purview, because of the county.
No, if, if septic leachate is coming into Whitefish Lake from Lion Mountain, that's a water pollution trespass. It, the city can bring an action, and if it chose to. Uh, the city is not helpless. It would be expensive. And certainly it should be within the discretion of the council, but the city can act. And likewise, if somebody's polluting the lake from a boat out on the lake, and the city's in the lakes. Uh, the lake is in the city's boundaries, seems like something could be done there.
The answer is, we can't. We. Do not have the authority. Fish Wildlife Parks has the authority over the surface of that lake. We, we've incorporated the floor of the lake, not the water in the lake.
Yeah, state owns the waters.
Yeah.
But this is activity on top of the water, anyway, whatever.
Yeah, just a complicated water. We actually, when the control shoreline, DNRC is like, like, uh. So it's DNRC. We can only control what happens on shoreline. Only to the high water marginal.
Between the low and high line.
I mean, and DNRC made that very clear to us way back before my time, it's still ours, what they said.
Okay.
So essentially, what, what. Your comments are wanting to do, and what I think all of us want to do is have. Transparent and open communication between these regulatory bodies and the city. And any enforcement mechanism. So, the more specific objectives. Are reaching to identify how we would know that there's a water polluted sediment nutrient. And then also to identify the body that would enforce. So how do we know and how do we enforce? And now it's a policy question of, do we want that to be in the goals and objectives, or. Is that something that we discuss, and then it gets kicked down to the draft and the action items? I feel like that's where we are. Do we need this in objectives?
Hey, we're, we're at some way.
And I appreciate that you have. Put it in one spot and have now, we have to make that choice. Is this something that we wanna say, Alan, thank you for writing very generally, and we would like to be more specific? Or do we say, we have the specifics part of them now, and we will contain those in one spot? And deal with them later. So what is the, the idea of the board? Can we have some general comments on, do we wanna continue to, to be specific? In these objectives?
Well, I go for being more specific, but abbreviating. And, uh, now with the land development monitoring, we ran into a lot of practical problems. Don't want this to be impractical, but I think we should be a bit more specific, abbreviated a bit. And, uh, keep these as objectives.
The other thing that I think about, if, if they are in there, we talked about having whatever this board. Recommends to staff as guidance. Um. Separable in a way that's visually easy for the, the council, when they review this, to say, these were board suggestions. These were staff suggestions, so that there's a basis for dialogue about what, um, the city council wants to do. Uh, ultimately.
That's a good point. So it needs to be something you can look at one and look at the other. And not say, I'm so confused about bubbles and red line. Um, so I think that that's, that's what this comes down to. How do we present what? What we want to present to city council that makes sense for them, so they can decide, yes, we like this. You guys went line by line, and we. We appreciate that, or this is a mess, and we don't go through it. We choose, you know.
Another, another, we, we don't want rubber strip.
Exactly, and so that's why we are going line by line, but it, it does become. Into the weeds to go line by line, keeping in mind that we're als, we also have the staff report in front of us.
We also added a bunch of John's stuff in there, those B through E are all things that came out of his comments.
Yeah.
That we incorporated into the draft. Um, or Alan did.
Yeah. Oh.
So, I mean, the, the best that we could, and we haven't really gone over those in specifics, but they cover a lot of the things that his concerns.
And likewise, in the last week or so, I've seen several things on, on this red line that I put okay about. So, we'll get to those, maybe.
Do you wanna finish stepping through these?
I'll try to go, well, next one is, uh, the Water Quality Information Center. We talked about that. Uh, I don't suppose that it'd be onerous, maybe it should be rewritten, but the last line. Uh, as I changed it, the city may rely on the Whitefish Lake Institute if the WLI performs. Any function in the water quality objectives. So that means for the whole document. The city may rely on WLI if it already is doing what is an objective here.
I like that addition. I think it's a given. I think it helps with any legal issues where people say the city didn't do that, and. We can go back and say, WLI was already doing it.
This, this may realize that an objective, I mean, just in the, how we word objectives. Um. That's the only thing I have a question about. We already have some stuff in there, says, continue to partner with Whitefish Lake Institute to address and monitor water quality, identify and address. Sources of contamination. To me, that covers that when it comes to. Um, you know, and what we added to the previous goal about information, I mean, I think covers that as well, but I mean. We're just trying to eliminate redundancies.
Right. When I, my reading of that, my immediate, uh, lawyer in me said, continue to part with White. Uh, Whitefish Lake Institute or other entities. I would, so that we don't have to rely just on them, we can rely on others, or we can partner with somebody else.
Yeah, they might back down.
So, continue to part with, or other entities, uh, to address and monitor. I mean, I think that would be, okay, that's something we can do. Um, it's general enough, and I think it addresses. Some of that, anyway, that, if I.
Flathead Lakers or whatever, I mean, I could retire or whatever, yeah.
I, I, on a personal level, I would propose that we amend section B. Or add to section B, continue to partner with White, Whitefish Lake Institute, or other, and or other. Uh, entities, um, to address and monitor, like that.
And the next one is E, on the next page, bidding to request funds to perform studies in order to further the research of goals. These objectives do not require the city to analyze water samples or conduct scientific studies, so maybe this. My thought was that maybe the city can get funds, the Whitefish Lake Institute might not be able to get to. So this is another may, it's discretionary with the city, they may request funds.
So that became anyway, so we, we can already do that, though. We can go to council and say, hey, the council wants us to do something, and then we. Ask for the funds, right?
Right.
We already do that.
Grants.
Okay, okay, if, if the council decides they wanna study something, we can get a grant, or we can allocate the money in the budget to do that.
Right, so should we tell the public that this is available in the form of an objective? If not, I can stretch.
So, so you're suggesting that the objective be. That the city should look for and search out grants for. Funding. Is that what you're suggesting? Of water quality?
Yeah.
Okay. We can question, that's not, that's not, that's not a question. What I understand you're saying is, a goal might be. Or objective might be that the city seek, direct the city, the city seek out. Such funds as federal or other funds that might be available to, uh, assist in the study or monitoring of.
Do we see, say, should request? I just left it as may.
Yeah.
May.
May, yeah, maybe probably, it allows it. Alright. So, next one is, uh, city of Whitefish shall try.
We're all with that, sorry.
Where are we, we want, do we want to add that?
I think some sort of objection, if they are, please tell me what it is.
I didn't understand. I missed.
He wants to.
Before we move on to the next thing, I mean, it's all like, we're going down.
The city may request or may seek funds.
I'll put it up here on the screen, so I'll, I'll rewrite it however you want, if that's what you wanna do. Yeah. So we can add this as objective, as reworded? Is that the question?
Or I don't know if there's a place.
Having a new objective.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we're rewording the one at the top of page nine.
To add as a new object.
What, your page nine?
This.
Yeah.
Second page. The continue to partner with. No, so it's, it may request funds, so it's E on the, it's, it's numbered page nine. I mean, it's not page nine, but it's numbered page nine on this red line draft. The very top.
The green on the left.
Yeah, I don't, right, I see that, I see that. I'm trying to. I wish we had a copy of this without the comments on the side, and then. Okay, well, this is the red line been better.
So this, this is here, I've already written this up, and I have, I have like, our version. I have two versions. I have his version, red marks, as a separate version. I can just copy and paste stuff over. Right, so that right there, now put into this document, and pass you wrote it, if we wanna change that.
Seek funds to perform study.
Dana's raising her hand, I'm gonna let her speak.
Hi guys, um, I just wanna be clear, you know, this is something that deals with our city finances, and. If you're putting it in this section, you need to put the same language in every section. We might be seeking grant funding, so I get worried. About putting something about seeking funds or grant funding just in one section, because it might lead to believe when we get to hazards, say fire mitigation. We already have our mitigation plan that says we're gonna be looking for grant funding. Are you going to put something about this in all sections where we would potentially need grant funding to get the objectives done? And so I just wanna give that input, that when it comes to the financing of how to complete the goals. Um, we need to be consistent in all sections, if we're gonna add something about funding.
It's fine.
So can we kind of place, put a place marker, placeholder in here and say. Add language about funding per this section? So I don't know what that would be for every section, but if we're going to put some funding, the city may seek funding to. Like, that could be the last item, objective of every section. The city may seek funding to further these objectives, but it's not. Bound to get.
So wouldn't it be. Bottom of every section?
Exactly, specific to that section. But I don't think we have to figure out that wording right now. Maybe better if we don't figure it out for every section now.
I guess my concern is that we already can, regardless of whether or not it's.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, it's kind of repetitive to say, the city may seek grant funding for the environment, or. Fire mitigation, for, I mean, we can do that anyway. So, I guess it's, again, how, um, that's always gonna be a city objective. For anything, like I said, for any of these chapters, it's always gonna be a city objective to seek grant funding or other types of funding. To fulfill our goals. So I guess that's just my concern. I, I guess there's no harm in putting in there, it just doesn't.
Again, you're saying it's too brutal.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
What's, what's it get us? That's what I'm saying. I'm trying, I mean, we're back to where I was, responding to what Frank said, is I'm trying to have stuff that's. Uh, objective, and then stuff that realistically we could do, but there's, but there's certain things, like what does it get us, right?
What was your hope?
What does it get us, right? We can only do that.
But, uh, it, it raises the glaringness and, uh. Increases a, a sense of importance of water quality, so there's all these things that we can do. Uh, are demonstration to the public, that, yeah, the city is really interested in water quality, and we can do this, 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 and then this. And yes, I guess this section is done elsewhere, but nobody knows that. So it's good to put it in there for the public purpose, so this, this growth policy, uh, really does. Seem to emphasize water quality. It's more emphasis than anything else, I suppose.
It's a positive emphasis. It doesn't point out problems. I mean, that was, that's part of the tone of the growth policy, right? These are opportunities. Um, uh, at least.
When you, when you. And lawyers in this room know this, if you're inclusive, that means you're exclusive. So by mentioning it as inclusive, you're also excluding things we might otherwise do. Cause I don't, I don't, I don't particularly think. I, I think that the statement, continue to partner with Whitefish Lake Institute and other entities to address and monitor water quality. That in and of itself says that we're committed to this thing, and partner with, that means seek funding, seek assistance, that, so. I think it says there, if you wanna say, continue to partner with, and others, including, um. Including looking for, or, um. You know, grant funding or federal government funding, again, that's given to what we do is for a living around here. Um, and always have, quite frankly, so, but, yeah.
Like I said, a given to the citizenry. They assume that, or do they need to be informed of that?
I, it's a good point.
I mean, that's something we could have in the narrative. People are reading that rather than the goals and objectives, like, you know, we're really trying to avoid redundancy and.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, that was, okay, and to address Dana's point, maybe we put that in the preamble, that's.
Yeah.
To.
City will continue to look at goals.
We will seek funding from it, whatever level we can to, certainly saying, that way it covers everybody, and then.
Yes.
Uh, it covers the whole thing, and. Uh, that would be, on the funding issue, that's, might be something I, I was, I think would handle it. I don't.
Well, it also sounds very logical.
Okay, we, we, the alternative is that we do it at the beginning, or at the be, it covers all sections. That's, that's easy, otherwise we have to be pretty meticulous about adding it to every single section. That's my only.
That is my only.
In preamble.
Right. Yeah, so it's like, so which things, we pull it out of this section, just put it in some sort of a preamble.
Right.
For the whole thing as a whole growth policy.
Right.
Yes, as a, something that the city will endeavor to do with respect to all of these go, all goals, objectives. We will, as you will, not just rely on city taxpayers, we will look for other ways to fund, whatever, whatever. Language makes sense. So the public would know if that's something we do as a regular. Keep that, keep that in your library, things to add later.
So we've done with that, okay, what's one I might have? City of Whitefish shall track three oh three D compliance, we talked about that. This is uh just obtaining the records relating to it. And uh I think the middle part could be eliminated, make it shorter. And then the last sentence is a report on the uh facts leading to the listings and probable sources shall be prepared. Uh, I've heard a lot of information on PCBs in the lake, but it'd be good to have a report on what, what is known about the probable sources? A serious matter, we should have a report somewhere, maybe it's been done already.
Do you have any information on that, if it's somewhere in the DEQ website that we can link to? Similarly to linking to reporting for BNSF or any of that?
Whitefish Lake Institute.
I don't know that they sample for contaminants like PCBs. Would they, probably sort of also.
Basically produced by dry cleaners, um, not where they track them.
Well. Didn't it come from the railroad builds over the years?
I don't know.
Oh, you're curious, so. I mean, I don't know, but.
There were some of that in the groundwater, did some of the soil testing in the Redway District because there was old laundries in there and stuff, but.
Uh, it seems to me like we shouldn't be kidding a complete free ride on the Whitefish Lake Institute either, or for additional requests. Um, and I don't know much about what the contract we have with them is. Um, but so, uh, I mean, some of these monitoring activities, if we called them out for the Whitefish Lake Institute, I'm sure that if it was part of their contract, they would, if it includes additional monitoring, they could do it.
Again, that's an implementation, I think the idea, we're going to continue to partner with the Whitefish Lake Institute and other entities to address and monitor quality and uh and identify and address sources of contamination, kind of covers the water.
It, it really doesn't, as the, the members of the public who read it and can't connect that general statement with PCBs. We need to have something, a, one sentence on PCBs maybe.
Well, then, so add.
Let's add it to the awareness.
But then we're, okay, I, again, I'm, now I'm drafting. Um, to continue to identify and address sources of contamination, including, but not limited to PCBs and given five others.
Or such as PCBs.
Including, but not limited to, language would work, I think would satisfy rather than having a whole se- separate section identifying, okay, we're going to do this, 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 this. If you want, if you want to identify PCBs, that's fine.
This is five pages on water quality.
Right, you don't even think water quality is worth that.
Well, it is, but. Would you notice?
Again, I'm, I'm happy to rewrite and restart.
All I'm, all I'm suggesting, John, is that many of these things are the devils in the details. What we're trying to do now is get some items here that we can follow up with the details on. And so at least the way I read it, again, we're trying to craft a directional uh general document so that we understand what we need. And so I, I think it would be perfectly appropriate for us to simply add to the end of Alan's B here. Um, including but not limited to PCBs or whatever else you wanted, or fireworks or anything else you wanted to add to that in terms of what we're going to do in order to part with people to continue to monitor that.
Well, we don't know what's going to be included five years from now.
Included but not limited.
Yes, exactly.
That's, that was my, that's my suggestion in terms of addressing that or incorporating it in short order in here.
So to add that to Alan's B.
Yeah, we, we have a big dialogue about PCBs in the chapter in the beginning of this.
Yes.
Some week, talk about, you know, how it's not listed and PCBs are sourced all in the background data on this.
Right.
You know, and that's why we have a general goal because there's all kinds of different contaminants in the lake.
Right.
They're all talked about in the body of the chapter. You know, I don't know that we need to re, make, put them all back in the thing because that contaminants covers all of those different things without having to specifically call them out. We have a whole thing here that talks all about that PCB section, that's a paragraph long, but it's in the growth policy. It's specifically, I mean, that's where.
Right, I mean, it's not an objective, it's a bunch of information, which is not.
Objective is to address the contaminants and identify them.
Yeah.
City of Whitefish shall track three oh three D compliance, that's obtaining documents. Which maybe the Whitefish City does not have at this time.
Yeah, that are all.
So we're stepping on the EPA now.
No, no, it's, there's a Freedom of Information Act, these are all public records, anybody can request them. And our lake is important, we should request them.
So, uh, that, I guess that the nexus here of do we have a water quality site that would list all of this or do we not? That's, that's what's happening with a lot of these things is in the beginning, we talked about having a totally separate water quality site or department. And now if, if we're not going to move toward that, then how do we say list or where do we list or can we incorporate that language of PCBs into B and then they get cohesive without listing everything like such as but not limited to? Is that sufficient or do we need a separate, separate uh objective on that?
Well, I think a separate objective would be for the City of Whitefish to track three oh three D compliance, that's separate. It's a separate activity, uh, requests to the federal government for records, maintaining those records, making them public somehow. So I, I see this separate.
Separate, so I guess from the city's perspective, asking the City of Whitefish to do that, saying that the City of Whitefish will do that. Is that feasible, is that something that is achievable?
Frank, give me this question. You know, most of this, nine percent of this is going to fall on Frank, right?
I wouldn't say that, but.
When you retire.
How the lake, how the city becomes entire the public works. Um, yeah, I mean, an annual data request to EPA and put it on the website, I mean, yeah, that's not.
Not difficult.
Overreaching.
Okay.
Just not once it's in the report then.
Not going to be as easy as it seems though. I mean, again, if you guys thought that is a objective, whatever, I think it's fine, realizing that it might not get done. Because we might not have the staff time to do.
Okay, I guess that's the big disconnect is like, once a year, it's not that hard and then it might not get done. So that's where we need to meet on this, if we're going to write it, then it'll have to get done.
Yeah.
And I guess that's what, that's kind of what we want. If we put it as an objective, we're saying this is important, we want it to get done, make it happen. So that's why we're going through this. Um, but at the same time, asking, is that something that is at all possible? Is it something that will be listed on a website reflecting what the EPA has provided? Or is it a link to a search through the EPA, you know, something so easy?
Yeah, that's, okay, actually.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think just requesting all the records from the EPA, does it sound easy? No, it's not going to be easy, it's going to be time consuming and again, if that, if that's what you guys want, that that's fine, but you have to realize that is it, everybody knows that city has limited resources. And what all the things we want done, in any realm, are not going to get done because we have to allocate our resources. So I think you guys have to decide too, what's really important for that, so it'll be really done. Would it be nice to have it done? Yes. But you kind of have to park, park as feasible for city staff as we are staffed. And realize that, you know, the more staff we add, more tax paid dollars we spend. So I think it's just delicate balance for you guys.
Yeah.
Tracking what you truly want, I mean, the whole thing is a delicate balance.
Yeah, and remembering that this is a draft of thoughts and objectives.
Yeah.
And I would much rather us include something now and then as we come into the draft, say that's not feasible, we've looked into it, we have to remove it, but I think it's better to include it now than not and lose it somewhere.
Yeah.
In the ether of what was that thing that we kind of wanted but forgot. So I would say leave that for now, Alan, that's my thinking.
Leave what?
Leave the, the language about PCBs and, but we've, I think you said the first sentence and the last sentence is what.
I don't have.
At least saying that, we're saying such as, we're saying monitor and identify and address the contamination. Such as PCBs, is that what you're saying?
Uh.
Up here.
They're not modifying the goal.
Such as PCBs.
Or other. That, or contaminants as defined here and above, if you want to do it that way.
What I'm highlighting here, is that what we're talking about?
I think what John is saying is that we keep F as a, an objective.
Section, yeah.
A section, separate and not modify it as Frank suggested.
Not added to B.
Not added to B. That Whitney says if we put that into, that's, that's not final, we can come back and visit that if we need to.
The, the tracking three oh three, so you're saying as written, um.
The first sentence of F and then last sentence of F.
First and last sentence of F. Right, so we've checked.
John chasing that in.
Who, who's F?
John's F.
John's F.
So. See. Okay.
So then you, okay. And then in B, you can eliminate.
But like that?
Yes.
That's what we're saying?
Yes.
Wish I could see that.
But now, do we need the part about the PCBs in the previous, other B?
Probably not. So we're talking about here?
Three oh three D compliance with regard to what?
Yeah, so just leave it.
Generally, it's all three oh three compliance, citywide, every instance of that. I mean, that's a pretty big, really specific to Whitefish Lake water quality.
And what I crossed out, that was PCBs and oil and grease, so that's what.
Timber sites, what is it? BNSF's other sites around the city where they have contamination.
Well, it says PCB lake is not compliant for PCBs and mercury and Whitefish River is not compliant for PCBs and oil and grease. So that sentence is why that objective would be there without that sentence. That chunk of the middle of the F, it seems like why would we care about three oh three? But then once you know we're not in compliance on this.
Goals, something, absolutely something we already talked about.
Yeah.
The lake and PCBs.
So that's mentioned.
Be educated on it, should be a general.
Yeah, no.
Back to.
I think the first and last sentence is good, the way it was.
Specifically to what, has to probably somehow have some line is referred back to that because we know how many different three oh three contamination things are citywide, you know, EPA's got. Might not just be the water, it might be.
That'd be nice to know.
A lot of.
We're out. We're out of compliance on a lot of that.
Lots that's been kept.
Can we track three oh three compliance? How's that work?
I don't know, I haven't done it. Again, it's an EPA regulation, it's not something the city regulates, so I'm sure I can talk to somebody at EPA and figure out how to get this report on a legal basis, but. There's a lot of stuff, once you cap it, put concrete or asphalt over it, they no longer monitor or do anything with us. It's our new issue method, having dealt with brownfield and things.
As I'm reading this thing, a three oh three D listed water is a body of water determined to be impaired or threatened by the Montana Department Environmental Quality. And now there's three oh three D is just referring to a body of water.
Water that's impaired.
Yeah, but it doesn't say a much impairment.
Well, it depends, there's a whole list of TMDLs, total maximum derelicts that that the EPA creates and states are then required in force. And so PCBs have gone, yeah, well. You know, it's like the thing from nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen to polyfluorinated vitamins. Haven't been made in a long time, but they stay in the ground forever, so.
So it is, essentially what we're trying to do is make the Whitefish Lake and the river not three oh three D listed water.
That's the goal, the objective is to track it and to have a report available so that people know.
That's it.
And by people. The public and people who can.
Yeah, alright.
Help do something about it.
Simplify it by just tracking three oh three D noncompliance. Just the ones where it's out of compliance. Not track everything.
So that's something that potentially we can look into, see how possible to create either a link or some type of, maybe it's a spreadsheet that you can download quarterly or something. See if that's possible, if it's not, then we revamp this objective a bit. And, and say, make available instead of track and report. Okay, so, alright, let's take a couple of minutes break because now we've been here two hours. Um, just a few minutes and then uh we'll come back.
Well, just so I, I'm clear, I thought we were stopping and we're going to add an additional objective.
To Alan's.
To Alan's.
From John's.
From John.
F on Alan's.
And it's going to say effectively the city shall.
Yes.
Track three oh three D compliance.
Exactly.
Noncompliance.
Noncompliance.
Alright, so we'll stop there.
Alright.
For, for a few minutes and then we'll come back reconvene, um.
Cool.
And finish up this and then move on to hazards and five.
I'm just getting into the hazards department.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you all.
So you guys, I have a, like an analogy in my head, maybe it's wrong, but I talked about goals and objectives. Um, I would think my goal is to, um, uh, be healthier, stop, right? And then objectives would be walk ten thousand steps. As a way.
Implementation.
But.
Well.
So I mean, your goal would be, or your objective would be like.
We got any paint, water, right?
Development exercise routines to become healthier and then implementation, you go down, down ten thousand steps because that's much more specific. So the objective is just a general way to accomplish the goal, but it's not a specific way to accomplish it. With the overall, I mean, the object, the overall goal is to be healthier. That's an objective, if there's one diet, uh, exercise and whatever.
Yeah.
You know, and little general objectives about that. And implementation would be how many times, like, how many steps you're going to do, or, I mean, what kind of food you're going to eat or whatever. But, so I mean, that's, it's, you can't get too specific in the, the stuff because it isn't, isn't regular, but regulatory. But the objective are things that you, the city can do to accomplish these things.
Right, and so when they're practical things that we aren't doing, that we can do, you don't want to be redundant off the things you're already doing.
You want to do the thing that you're not doing that are practical and are achievable, right? And that's the bottom line and, you know, that's where we, you know, staff, we're trying to stay away from doing things like, well, we're you know, telling the county what to do or telling federal government what to do, or telling DEQ what to do. you know, telling the county what to do or telling federal government what to do, or telling DEQ what to do, we have, we can't control that stuff. We can only control what the city can do, that's why we have objections to some of the goals, objectives that specifically have us monitoring other agencies, which we have no power or control over.
Well, and I, I understand that, and I, I, you know, so I'm trying to, you know, clarify, you know, my impression with you know, your professional interpretation of pro. Right, so what I read in this manual, growth manual, which is potentially outdated, but it says, you know, the, the growth policy is a document.